Okay, okay. We got to submit the paperwork. Wait, wait, we have this, I'm gonna do that thing. The letters. I like to do this now. I can't think about this. Yeah, I know. I know. I know. I know. I know. I know. I'm watching. I'm going to go. I'm not. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's all I got to. I don't need any questions. I don't have to know. I'm like, I just did it. And I don't, and this is how you work out. You know me. But it's not. I'm sorry. Yes. I swear. You're being very checking in. Yeah, right. Yeah. Just not to try to make a difference. I need to be a writer. I'm gonna go. I'm running out of time. You don't need another. Right? No.
You know what we could? I'm trying to get out like a junior. I'm taking my back here.
I never see you writing.
And I don't. I mean, I'll check off some things, but I don't. It's like, that's why you throw my hand in the net.
I didn't know. I didn't know. I didn't know.
Start with invitation. Question.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your love and grace. We thank you for our country, our town, and for you to gather here. Just ask your blessing on this being in your name and prayer. Amen.
Amen. For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmembers Amitis.
Here.
Councilmember Noble.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cummings.
Here.
Mayor Howell.
Present.
Manager Cavalli.
Here.
Attorney Mora.
Present.
Like to move to the consent agenda for April 18th minutes. We have someone who would like a motion to accept those minutes and accept them.
I would just like something in the future, since the meetings are recorded, I would like the Zoom, like the YouTube link to be added to the top of all the minutes.
Okay.
Because I've noticed when I was reviewing some of them, especially, you know, the one on the 13th, since, you know, I was unable to attend, like it says, you know, discussion amongst council members, you know, ensued. But that's very vague and like, you know, we talked for a significant amount of time. And if there was a resident who missed the meeting and wanted to like catch up on what was going on and pick up the minutes, they would not understand what happened at the last meeting. For instance, by reading the minutes. So I think, I'm like, I understand it's a lot to gather all that. And I'm not sure if you don't have to include everything because they are recorded. But I think maybe you should include that in the minutes or try to like, but that's my opinion.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll send one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we go to public comment, I have something here I'd like to read. During public comment, any member of the audience may come forward to the podium to say their comment or concerns regarding any matter over which the town council has authority over, excluding agenda items. We ask that every speaker state their name and address. Public comments shall be shared from the podium only. Speaking out of turn from your chair or from any other location other than the podium is not permitted. Crosstalk and private conversations are disruptive and therefore not permitted. All statements made to the town council shall be made to the town council as a whole and not directed towards any individual town council member. No personal attacks or slanderous marks shall be permitted. No speaker shall be interrupted and no debate shall take place by any speaker of the community or town council. Public comments is for comment only. If you have a question, please direct that towards the town hall via email or a phone call. For those who are speaking, in fairness and respect, please adhere to the three minutes. It is not procedural for the council to respond to the public comment and counsel. At this time, I am requesting that you refrain from responding to any of the comments. At this time, I'd like to open up public comment. Maybe you'd like to step up and speak? Please state your name and address, sir.
Michael Wimmer, 603-844-70-NOR. Just really have kind of some questions, not comments. I noticed we changed garbage companies and I'm just wondering why did we do that? Because they were great. I had great service from them. They were awesome. Was there a reason that we changed them or?
I'd like to direct that. Sorry.
Absolutely. We had the same contract for 17 years and went out to request for bid, request for proposal, excuse me, and it was a competitive proposal. And basically they lost the proposal.
Because of an increase in the rates or?
Well, what do you thought? Again, all the, there's three providers submitted quotes and they were not the lowest all around. And also there was a team of four people, staff members that evaluated their proposals. And again, they actually had the lowest score.
I just curious on it because I, they've been awesome. I've never had any issues with them whatsoever.
Do you mind if I ask if you have any problems with the new company too?
I've only been there a week, not yet.
Okay. Glad to hear that.
I just hope they're as good as those guys because they really did a good job. They were very friendly, always able to help or whatever. I mean, very, very good, but anyhow. The other question I had is, I guess, where are we with code enforcement? I still see stuff that shouldn't be there and there's stuff that should be here. What's happening with that? What's happening?
Obviously, we do not have code enforcement. We actually have some emergency situations that we're dealing with right now that really are, in my opinion, are more critical than the code enforcement. Now, that being said, it hasn't just been sitting there. I'm still looking at different options that we have, looking at the market cost to hire somebody in-house to do that. I'm also looking at the, looking at potentially looking at an outside provider such as Mel's County to do that. Again, my job is to put together recommendations, bring them to council and then decide.
Well, I guess my period is, I still see a lot of stuff that shouldn't be happening.
For a lot of things, me and.
I thought we had a code enforcement.
We do. We no longer have that person. At this moment, me and Chief Vino back there have been working on several cases together. You know, the ones that get to us.
All right. One more thing, not a big deal, golf carts. What, do we have any kind of a regulation on golf carts in the city or is there, you can just drive them down the road at your pleasure or what? Yeah.
That's not the tip at the moment. I do not believe we allow for golf carts in this community at the moment.
Okay. Just.
We're working on it.
Okay.
We're working on it.
All right. Thank you.
I have three comments, sir.
Anybody else? All right, at this time, I'd like to close public comment and move to the action agenda. And the pure report number 2022-657 is going to be taken on by Randy Mora.
Just give me a quick moment, Mr. Mayor. I originally intend to be the presenting speaker. We are on ordinance number 2022-657, an ordinance of the town of Kansas City, Florida, creating Division 1 of Articles 7, Chapter 2 of the Town Code relating to procurement rules to add new provisions necessary to facilitate efficient and legally compliant procurement activities, making related findings and providing separability, qualification and respective data. This has been a first reading ordinance number 2022-657. As you can see, you have the ordinance before you. This is squarely within your authority in terms of legislative authority. This is what the council does. And so what you have before you, the genesis of this came from legal, me, looking at your current landscape for the better part of 2022. We've been discussing the need, anticipated desire and goal of conducting procurement activities in the coming months and weeks. And your code is scant on procurement guidelines and guidance. You have a charter, Charter Section 5.14, that has a series of subparts with admittedly incredibly restrictive guidelines on dollar thresholds, especially in the common marketplace. Presently, for example, your manager has the capacity to enter into contracts up to $10,000, provided he or she secures at least two written or phone solicited quotes or estimates. That quantum in other communities is closer to 20, 25,000, but it's 10,000 here. One of the reasons that this came up was we have been talking about your community being in transition, having an urgent need for personnel. And if you're going to acquire that personnel and not do so in the form of an FTE hire or part-time employment hire, a hire in-house, but rather a consultant or temp through a contracting agency, you're looking at procuring services. And so outside of the $10,000 threshold, beyond that, you need to go to RFP, RTP, that's a request for proposal, invitation to bid, request for qualifications, RFQ, or some other procurement mechanism as provided by statute. And those are not always the best solution for you when they are not statutorily required. There are some step, there are some services you must acquire through those means, such as architectural services. Often, more often than not, for reasons that should be obvious, building design. You don't want buildings falling on people or washing away in storms and things of the like. So there's a lot more guidelines there in the statute. But where you're looking at consulting services, your code just has that charter provision, nothing else. A lot of other communities tend to have explicit procurement guidelines. This is designed to bring you into alignment with the modern landscape, modern legal landscape in terms of procurement. I understand and appreciate that it is 15 pages long. There's a lot you need to do in procurement and define and understand. Some of, one of the more notable provisions within this that I wish to draw your attention to, and I will say, the purchases are gauged at the same levels of the, of the charter provision. So when you look at small dollar purchases, that 2,500 to 5,000, 5,000's quantum, that's drawn from the charter. Intermediate purchases of the 5,000 and 10,000, that's drawn from the charter. And then thereafter, there's purchases requiring formal solicitation and it's 10,000 because that's what your charter says and we cannot contradict your charter. We're that it could be higher, but it is what it is because of your, your charter provisions. And charter provisions can't be changed unilaterally by the council that acquires the vote of the electorate. So this is to, with a hat tip towards that and understanding of that, to provide you the flexibility you commonly see in other communities. And so one of, one of, among other issues, so, so for those of you who were on council or who attended, when we adopted the code provisions on code enforcement to allow you to secure a magistrate at code enforcement board, my analogy at the time was I'm giving you a toolkit. You don't need to use all the tools, but at least you'll have them when you need them. This is the same thing, but for procurement. There are some tools that you might need sooner than later, and so I'm going to highlight them so you understand what this is about. This is not purely for that purpose. You might need a screwdriver now, but we also have a hammer and a wrench and other things in this toolbox. This is a robust ordinance. But what we're, one of the things that we have in here as you go through these provisions is there is a waiver provision, which is common in other communities. And in fact, other communities, we, this ordinance was not just written fresh, you know, just making up words on the go. We've used this in other communities like the city of Oldsmar as recently as last year. But one of those things is to allow you waiver where necessary. And one, I'm getting to that provision. I'm trying to remember exactly. One second. Pardon me. Scrolling and speaking. So where you have emergency circumstances, this is section 2-409 Sub B. It begins by saying, "We're not otherwise prohibited by law," so of course you have to abide by law. "The town council is authorized to provide for the limited or complete waiver of competitive source selection policies and procedures upon a determination that the likely non-speculative costs of competitive purchasing would exceed any potential savings and benefits to the town, or upon a determination that the acquisition of goods or services would be provided by a unique source or provided based upon particular skills and expertise." It continues, "Waivers may also be authorized by the town council for any purchase where emergency conditions or urgent demands for commodities or services render competitive source selection policies an obstacle to the timely fulfillment of the town's ordinary functions and duties." That language was, was crafted in part for this community, though only a portion of it. And that is a recognition where you need, for example, we talked at length last week about bookkeeping services. At the risk of stealing thunder, calls have been made to other jurisdictions to see, hey, can you loan us some of your personnel? The general answer has been, we don't have personnel to loan right now. So we're going to need to find somebody. So far, the direction from this council to staff has been, we're not really looking to hire long-term people. We're looking for short-term solutions that will give us the time to determine what we want to do long-term, whether that be an FTE or establishing a contract or otherwise. So you, but you would still have to, under the statute, fulfill the prompt payment act, fulfill your bookkeeping, your AP, your AR and all of that. So where you need to fulfill your, your ordinary functions of your municipality and the competitive bidding process can take you anywhere from four to eight weeks. You don't have four to eight weeks right now. And so if this council, upon written recommendation from staff, determines that purchasing through competitive procurement is not necessarily the best use of your resources at that time, you can choose to waive it and enter into an agreement with a third party. Whether that be some, and I'm not talking about a specific third party. I want to be very clear. I am looking at this situation. I'm looking at my historical knowledge of your community and I'm trying to give you the resources to be successful and to fulfill the needs you have, sometimes more frequently than, than, than other jurisdictions have found themselves in. And so you provide yourself that flexibility to say, under this circumstance, whether it be in a pandemic, because of a pandemic, a hurricane, or everybody quit at once last, like last year, we have to do our job. Whether we like it or not, the job needs doing. And so this allows you that flexibility to say, hey, we found somebody who is retired from the state of New York. They worked at Price Waterhouse Cooper, but they're retired down here, they're boarding, they want to help out. They worked in municipal auditing and they're prepared to provide us 20 hours a week. We want to bring them on as a contractor, not a full-time employee. How do we procure their services without saying, we asked around and we got quotes and we got them to apply and other people apply? This is what that is oriented toward. This provision is oriented towards. The ordinance goes well beyond that and I do want to, I do want to underscore that. There's provisions relative to construction contracts, other personnel for rather professional and consulting services. It sets forth reasonable guidelines and expectations where there to be a bid protest, which is where somebody challenges, hey, I should have got it, not them, and what that looks like. People already have that right under the statute, but you have some flexibility to craft what it looks like in your community and where you have those powers, you should assert the powers to run your community as you see fit. And so that, and then there's another exception where you're talking about sole source procurement. If there's only one person who make widgets, makes widgets and you really need widgets, we can say, hey, we're moving on with just the person who makes widgets. It's the only place we can get it. We don't need to go to the marketplace and wait for the sound of practice. And so that's, that's some of the language that's in there. It also acknowledges, excuse me, piddibacking and other measures. And so that's what this ordinance is designed to do. It is still compliant, in my estimation, with your charter. It is consistent with the operative law. It was drafted in large part by a colleague of mine who focuses and has extensive experience both with Manatee County and the city of St. Pete with procurement. In fact, their spouse is an attorney who is also a procurement specialist. Person's passionate about it and I don't get it, but they are. And so we use, we use that talent in our, in our firm and that's one of the things that we're always proud of, is highlighting the talents we have beyond the person that's always sitting in this desk. I personally reviewed every word of this. I'm comfortable with it. I revise and refine it and I submit it to you for consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So what is our next move on this? Do we have to vote on this? Do we have to agree with consent?
It's an ordinance, so by, by law, you have to vote on it. You'll have a motion, a second procedurally, discussion amongst yourselves, any, any comment from the public and ultimately a vote of this body because it is a regular ordinance. It's standard majority vote. This is the, when we talk about the powers of a legislative body, this is what you do. This is what you should do. This is what you do. This is where your power is.
So tonight, in order to get us to the next step, what do we have to do this evening?
All those things I just said. Ultimately, ultimately, you have to decide how you, whether or not you as a body intend to pass this. You have the discussion and emotions, any, any discussion from the public and you make a vote. Assuming this were, were this, I won't even say assuming, were this to pass on first reading, then we have for ordinances under Florida statute, we have to have a second reading. A second reading, before you have a second reading, it must be advertised in a newspaper or general circulation. So we will go through that process. For those of you who are, who have subscriptions to the local media and press, you, you may be aware, they don't print five days a week anymore and they only take ads within a certain amount of times in advance. So that may dictate, that may very well dictate just how soon we are able to have second reading. That may require a special meeting, but quite frankly, with the rate you're tracking, that special meeting is probably coming one way or the other. And so that, that would be the process going from here. And then if it's adopted at that second meeting, it would take effect immediately that night. Upon adoption on second reading, work, work to go through that process.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay. Marvers, do you have anything you'd like to say about it?
I know you're going a mile a minute, so just, my, one question is, so with all these 15 pages, do we still have to have three bids to bring someone in or no, that takes that this way, that way?
I'm going to start, I have to be the lawyer. I have to give you the nuanced answer. You start with your charter. Ordinarily, if you are doing a procurement above $10,000, you have to vote a bid based on your charter, not statute, but your charter. What this allows the council to do is say, we recognize that requirement. We recognize the interest that it serves for the public trust and for the protection of public resources. However, in some circumstances, you may decide as a body collectively that doing that actually does more detriment to the public health, safety and welfare. And you say, we recognize that and we think this is an appropriate, is an appropriate circumstance to waive that requirement. And it requires a written recommendation from staff to, to get to that point as written. And so you can say, staff is saying, hey, we need this soon. And you say, you know what? I agree. In this limited instance, we are going to waive. So let's say, for example, in the next two to three weeks, under your ordinary guidelines, we say, hey, we found ABC Corporation. ABC Corporation is prepared to fulfill your, fulfill your current need for bookkeeping. But at $10,000, they can give you three to five weeks of runway, tops. And then you would have to go, you would have to at that, at the same time, functionally, go out to bid and get that process going and hope you get everything back in time before those three to five weeks are up. Were this to be adopted, by the time it was adopted, you could say, we got our three to five weeks, this will be adopted by the second reading. And if we determine that we need to continue with that party or find, or we're already aware of an alternative to them that we think will suit us well in the, in the near term, we are willing to waive the procurement guidelines and enter into an agreement with XYZ Corp. through December without a competitive bidding process, but with an understanding, of course, you are to, you are dealing in public funds. Vet your candidates. I'm not suggesting you just say, hey, we found, you know, Bobby Jim and Scott, he seems to be good with money and we're going to hire him. You should still certainly vet your candidates. But if you find a qualified corporation, hey, three other cities in Pasco, Broward and Palm Beach County have all hired this company and we think they're a good fit for us in the here and now, we need them right now, then that's what, you have the ability, not the requirement, the ability, the flexibility to do that. And that is not an uncommon measure. I, I, I know it seems uncommon based on where you've been, but that is a very common measure in communities to say, based on the unique circumstances facing us right now, we need to do this. And again, that can extend to hurricanes and, and other things as well.
Okay.
I have a question. That's fine.
Okay.
I think it was very, very handy, by the way. I think flexibility is very important because there's a lot of times things come up in contracts where it's very difficult and it's not written that properly. So I think the flexibility for us right now is very important. So that is a good, a good thing.
And I will tell you, this was not just purely done by this circumstance, although that was a major catalyst. The other way that I've looked at this, I've separately had conversations with each of you and also emailed you that you are going, that you, one of the things that I'm recommending you do in the near term and I'm providing to the manager is a, a RFP for attorney services. I'm not suggesting you waive it for that. There, I don't think there's good justification for that. My contract is good through November. I've advised each of you that because you're going into budget season, if you're going to do an RFP for those kinds of services that are long-term, you do so sooner than later so that it is consistent with your budget. You don't do an RFP at the end of your budget season and then throw the whole budget off. I don't plan to personally reapply through that process. And so I'm also looking at the things I can do to set you up for success with whomever is sitting in the seat past that day. And given the amount of procurement you're talking about, that to me is one of the highest priorities, to be a good steward of the community and, and this office.
I should say thank you also to the dash 404.
Yes, ma'am.
Third sentence. Put it on the board.
Two dash 404 on page 415, small dollar purchases.
Yeah, third sentence. See, I can write it down. Third cent, third sentence or?
Can you just tell me specifically what it is in the third sentence that you're looking at?
Put it on the board.
More. Oh, the more. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a scripters error and you can definitely fix that between first and second reading.
No, that's all.
Answer me. Answer me. I said answer me. I'm not going to take no for an answer. You guys are going to have to answer me. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's fine.
That's funny. Okay.
All right. Well, we've had public comment. We've each had our own comments up here. I guess the next thing we would need, we would need a motion to accept this or send a motion for the second reading.
If it is your desire to advance this to a second reading, we would need a motion to approve the ordinance. If between now and second reading, if you have more time to digest it, you have specific questions, you are certainly always able to contact me. And additionally, as long as they are not major overhaul changes, we can make those changes between first and second reading. I will tell all of you, because I work for a collective body, if one of you calls me and says, 2406 needs to go, I'll say, great, we'll put a pin in that. And when we, when the body gets together, we'll see if they agree. And if that's the will, then we'll amend it accordingly. But if it's, if you continue to find any scripters errors or anything, please let me know. We'll clean that up before, before second reading and address those little things. But if it's substantive change, that'll come from the body, but we should certainly compile those substantive concerns between now and second reading.
Okay. Need a motion. You, except.
A motion to approve ordinance 2022-657.
Double second, I motion. 2022-657, here the ordinance.
There's a motion and a second on the court, mayor. Do we roll call voter? Yes, mayor.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Amitis.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Cummings.
Yes.
And Mayor Howell.
Yes.
By your vote of 401, the motion carries. This will proceed to second reading and we will obviously notice it appropriately.
Can I ask one question first? In the process that you outlined, did you say it has to be put in the newspaper before the second reading?
Before the second reading, not the full 15 pages, the title of the ordinance must run, and according to, I believe it's Florida statute 166041, I might cut that wrong, but it, it's fairly certain it's chapter 166. Yes, it has to run in a paper of circulation within the community, namely the tent paper.
Is that, that's something you would handle, correct?
Yes, I've done it before. It's, every ordinance needs an.
Is there any chance that we can get that in on Sunday's paper? It has to be on, on a paper, not on.
There's some, there's some provision for online. I'm going to advise you under these circumstances that you stick to the newspaper.
Could you say about getting it in Sunday's newspaper, please?
They publish their deadlines, so I have to look at what the deadline is.
I believe the deadline for Sunday publication is the Tuesday before. From other communities, it might be Wednesday. From other communities, it might be Wednesday by. We will contact them tomorrow and see what the soonest we can practically publish is, and that may inform our meeting schedule in part.
But if it's feasible, and we can't get it in there, is it feasible to do it online?
I would have to look at what that requires, that is a, there was some newer amendment in this past legislative session pertaining to that. I will tell you, not a lot of communities have navigated it, and there's not, because it's a work of art of Tallahassee, it is not the beacon of clarity that you would hope in some instances. So I'm happy to review that and see if we have that option. It's not just as simple as, you know, putting it on Facebook, but we can see what our options are.
I was talking about the newspaper.
No, I understood, but when I say, when I say the internet, there's even specific channels to do that, there's services that have to be able to serve circulation.
So you're going to check for the newspaper, and you're going to check for internet, is that, is that correct?
I'll look into the legality of that, on, and I talk on a daily basis, and we'll coordinate accordingly.
Okay. Then I guess we're ready to move to the next item, executive search for town manager updates.
I'll, I'll just start by opening, at the end of the last meeting, we had some guidance in terms of next steps. One of them was that you, that the council collectively desired us to procure services for an executive search firm to identify your next manager, or and walk and help you through that recruitment process. One of the things we mentioned was looking at the possibility of piggybacking. Piggybacking is when you use a contract that was competitively bid by another community. One of the people present, Mr. Duncan of Imagine That, had mentioned that the city of Temple Terrace had recently done this, and perhaps that presented an opportunity. When you piggyback, you can't use a completed contract, you have to use an ongoing contract. That contract was complete, and so that didn't, it didn't present that opportunity, which is why you're not seeing a roster like that. What we've done, though, is we have modeled this after their procedures. When you do competitive acquisitions, there's a few instruments by which you can do that. I know there was a gentleman here last week who, whose career is that. You, one of them is an RFP, that's the most common, request for proposals. You say, here's generally what we want to do, let us know how you want to do that, an RFP for attorney services. We need an attorney, show us what you being an attorney looks like, and we'll see if we're interested in that. Another, another approach is an invitation to bid, that's when you know specifically what you want. It can be, we know we want somebody to recruit a town manager, these are gonna be their jobs, this is generally their qualifications, tell us what you're, how, tell us if you can do that and at what price. You also see this sometimes in construction, we need a sidewalk slab, it's gonna be ten feet long, with this material, this depth, this width, give us bids. It's when you specifically know what you want to do. Another one is RFQs, request for quotes, and then there's a whole nother one in private public partnerships. But that is to say there are different instruments, this is an invitation to bid. I want to emphasize that while the materials show you some names of firms, that was done to show you that the staff is aware of the players in the marketplace, an invitation to bid is open to the marketplace. Anybody can, is, anybody and everybody is invited to bid if they so desire, and it will be published in that same fashion. So if you see, hey, Randy, I saw five firms, or six firms in the staffing, but I know, I happen to know of this seventh, what about them? Everybody's free to apply. That's not, that is in no way an indication of the town is predisposed to selecting anybody, it's just, here are some players in the marketplace, here's what it looks like in other communities, here's some of the publications they provided that. So that, I want to be very, very clear. The invitation to bid generally has, can allow me to switch to those materials on the screen, as I think some may be following along. Last, in the last forty-eight hours, I provided staff with some resources like the invitation to bid statute, which you see there, so you'll see some things in here. All of this is not what is being published to the public. I provided SGR recruitment services bid for last year, when we were considering using them for Pam and I, Pam Brontacho and I had contacted them concerning the background search, and similarly with, with, excuse me, with Colin Benzinger and Associates, I provided some of that material, just to show you that we've sort of done a version of this before, not, not an ITV, but something similar. So it looks something like this, it starts out, and we are gonna need some input from the town council tonight on what the ITV is going to say in terms of timelines and the like, just like we did last year, sort of understanding where we're gonna go. The invitation to bid, presently it says that the responses would be due June sixth, that gives people, that gives entities a little less, a little less than a month to review this and determine if they wish to bid, and put together the packet and submit. If you wish to change that, you can. We tried, the manager and I were looking at other arrangements, tried to find something that was comparable in terms of the reasonable timeline to formulate a response, understanding that these entities might be doing other bids that have deadlines sooner, and you gotta get a workflow and work queue together. The invitation to bid would look like this, and I think illiterate, so I won't read the whole thing, if you want me to, I'm happy to, but this is what the document would look like. I will tell you, I've highlighted the dates in the event, you have some, some preferences there. Presently, again, it tosses out a bid closing date of June six twenty-two. It, it says trying to have the position filled no later than July fifteen. Admittedly, that is incredibly aggressive, especially if you get a field of candidates. I can tell you, I was at a meeting just last night in Ballard Beach, they're going through this process right now, their period doesn't even close until, until either the sixteenth or the twenty-third, I wanna say it's the twenty-third, and they're already at twenty-three applicants. So if they were going to win over that down, just like you folks might remember last year, hey, we had twenty, we narrowed it to ten or five, and maybe we narrowed that further to three, that's gonna take time, and you're gonna want time to look at that, to really have some time with those, with those resumes and the like. So we may wish to discuss moving that date back. Last year's contacts, we published the ad on May twenty, well, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two was a Sunday, that was when we completed it, on Monday, or immediately following the Labor Day holiday, or Memorial Day holiday, it went out. And we filled that position August eleventh, twenty twenty-two. So roughly from June one to August eleven was our, it was roughly a little more than two months last year. Yes, ma'am, mayor?
I'm not, not real positive on this. I don't think that we're ready to put out a bid, you know, or an open bid, because we don't even have established yet what we're looking for.
If you'll allow me to continue with the presentation, I think we might be able to get this.
Okay.
It's my desire, it's my, it's ultimately your determination. We've crafted this in a way that if you have limited inputs, we could be in a position to publish as soon as tomorrow, to get that process going. As you may be, as you're all surely aware, your manager gave sixty days' notice two weeks ago, so that puts us at forty-four days going down. So time is of the essence, understanding that we're gonna have to find some interim solution as well. The sooner the better, that we have somebody long-term in place reduces the time you have somebody interim in place, and a long-term person is better situated to get the road running and really, really take care of business instead of being the steady hand in the ship. Last week, you had a presentation from representative from Imagine That, and when they talked about some of the things they wouldn't like to have done versus what they did, they said, please recall, we were trying to be a steady hand on the ship. We had ambitions, but that went sideways pretty quickly between Lynn's exit and other circumstances, so you're, you're likely to have a steady hand for the time that you have an interim, not an agent of change. That comes with, that typically comes with a full-time position, but of course, that's, you know, this body's call. Generally, information, this is sort of the, what would generally be solicited, not from the candidates for manager, but from the company that would be responding to the invitation to bid. And then it would also, it would also provide the anticipated, the last part of this was, what does our town manager look like? We happen to have done this somewhat recently, so the anticipated town manager qualifications reads pretty closely to what was published May twenty-ninth of last year. It says, the town manager serves at the pleasure of the town council and is appointed by a majority vote of the council for a term fixed by an employment ring. The town council has expressed the desire that the next manager have a bachelor's degree from an accredited four-year college or university, with a degree or major coursework in public administration, business administration, or a closely related field. It is also preferable that a candidate possess a minimum of five years' work experience as a top-level municipal or public sector administrator. Preference will be given to candidates that have a master's degree in public administration and ICMA credential manager designation. Residency is not a charter requirement, even so, residency within the town of Pennant City or in close proximity to the town is strongly desired for emergency management purposes. That should sound familiar to you, it is what is published, what was published last year. It then sets forth the charter responsibilities with very limited textual revision given the format. These are the enumerated responsibilities of your manager in the charter. And so it sets those out, and then on an additional page, desired knowledge, skills, and abilities, this goes back to what was in the ad. So through the recruitment process, the council has identified several priorities for the new town manager. In fact, the first, among them being effective in open communication with the town council, town staff, and residents with priorities set annually and quarterly progress reports provided to the council. The town council desires enhanced transparency to its residents regarding its priorities, priorities and progress of its projects. That language is there. Formation of a collaborative staff and team, economic development, annexation process, and commercial retail redevelopment of existing commercial properties, intergovernmental partnerships with Penous County to address roadways, review and preparation of the town budget and town policies and procedures, successful grant experience to assist with infrastructure needs such as storm one. And then the final element, compensation, states that the town is offering this position with a willingness to provide competitive compensation commensurate with a candidate's experience and duties. Because I was providing something to you, I did not feel it was my place to put a number there. That is what the ad said last year. You had a presentation as recently as last week that spoke to what the market demands for that position in this region are, so if you wish to make that more explicit, your compensation structure may, may inform who you see in terms of the executive search firms. They, they may have some, some are more, how am I, where is this? Some have a higher interest at the higher dollar amount of proof, depending on what their financial arrangement may be. And so, and then that would really conclude, that everything else in this is supplemental materials. Not, the executive search firm on over, with page thirty-eight onward in the packet, would not be part of the ITV, it would be this, and I would just make sure if there's anything else that we wish to have from that executive search firm as a base, base response, that we would include that. But I wanted to see what, the way this, the way this is contemplated to work, the successful firm would be able to demonstrate experience in executive recruitment campaigns, establish screening criteria, and articulate a communications and recruitment plan. So you don't have to have the whole plan, that's their job, that's why you're paying them. Most qualified firm would be able to build and manage a national recruitment campaign for the position. In addition, the successful firm will conduct a search for the role mentioned above and incur all associated costs, and the entire process of executive search must be included in the bid. So they have to tell us what it is all included, not in fees and charges like a cell phone plan. And then, if selected, they'll receive a bid award notice, which will advise the select from the date, time, and location of the project kickoff. The project kickoff following an invitation to bid is ordinarily a meeting, where you sit with them for the first time, say, how's all this gonna work? And, you know, what's your vision, like, we saw the page, we wanna work with you, we've given you the award notice, so let's talk it through, let's make sure we're a good fit, let's do, let's talk through and make sure we have shared expectations, at which point a notice to proceed is issued by the town, you go through the process. And that is sort of suiting us where we stand. Again, this would be published for all comers, last time we used Manstar with some of our more recent, we probably published there, and otherwise, that doesn't prevent us from sending it to firms that we know are in the marketplace and who we know have done similar work in Florida, we can do that as well, but we also have to, you know, make sure the marketplace has it somewhere. So that's the presentation on the invitation to bid. If you guys have inputs, suggestions, recommendations, we welcome them. If you, ultimately, the, the intention of staff to, in consideration of the urgency of the circumstances you face, is to get this out as soon as possible. If that's not possible tomorrow, that's totally fine, that's, you guys are in charge that way. If you feel you need more time with this, so be it, but just remember, the time we take planning is the time we, we are cutting into, if you will, the end result, we push back the end result. So with that, it's your show. Unless Pete has anything else. Pete, do you have anything else to say?
If you are right, we will be able to have our document against. Do we have any public comment on this for us? Yes, ma'am.
Teresa's minus fifty-two oh one, fifty-seven three more. I don't see any reason to wait, I think the only thing I've heard that you, as a council, might want to talk about would be the salary, but we can put that invitation out to bid as, as it was, just to get the ball rolling and get people applying, and in the meantime, you all can still have a meeting and, you know, discuss what kind of a figure you would wanna put there. But otherwise, you did go through this process a year ago, you know what you asked for, I don't think it really changed all that dramatically, and it, it really needs to roll. What's disappointing to me a little bit is that a number of residents stood here last week and talked about the job that Manager Cavalli has, has done, and I know there were some council members that were interested in talking about, you know, maybe opening communication and seeing if we couldn't get him to stay and avoid all of this expense, because this is going to cost a lot of money. And so it's very disappointing that obviously the majority of the council was not interested in that, because we're still having this discussion. Thank you.
No? Bonnie, anything you'd like to say?
So I do not want to move forward on this right now, because we just got this tonight. I mean, I should have had an opportunity to read it, and to just plop all of this information on our desk tonight is rather unfair, and so I, for one, do not, you know, support that. And I think it's, as we talked last week, I think it's important not to just run out and try to hire FTEs. I think it's important for us to have the priorities that need to be done right now. So I know, one, a budget needs to be done, and so. We can hire somebody to do our budget, that was discussed last week, you know, whoever that might be, there's companies out there that can do budgets. And so I think we need to understand our tasks at hand, understand what task needs to be done, and, I mean, because we pretty much agree that Pete cannot do all of this work. So we need to get a prioritization list to make sure that we're getting all the tasks done to meet our regulatory requirements in whatever the municipality needs. So, like I say, for me, no, I will not go out with a, I mean, I personally think we should table this topic, because we didn't have an opportunity to read it.
So this is the fastest way to start the process, to try to hire someone? The other, the other, our other option is to go with a consulting firm, or, or an RQ, use a consulting firm to find somebody, but then it's not, they're gonna do more of the selection process, if I'm not mistaken, if I read something in there. So we have less say-so on who we give through them, because they do more of the search for us, or who we, is that, is that correct?
So I, it's important to parse the process here, because you have, admittedly, a lot of needs. We are not talking, this, this invitation to bid is not about hiring an FTE. This invitation to bid is to hire a contracting company that will ultimately find you an FTE, an FTE that is integral to your form of government. As you talk about issues that need to be resolved, including chief among them, a budget, for example, your charter tasks the town manager with preparing a budget. You need to have a town manager, and this is your best step to getting a town manager. Inasmuch as there's been a concern communicated about the timing of the delivery of information, I very respectfully request that some consideration be given to the context of the circumstances. One of the things, so we, we had a meeting that went until roughly nine forty-five PM Wednesday night. Thursday was spent trying to determine if there was a contract that we could use that would circumvent all of this. Friday was spent trying to make calls and get answers, had a weekend. Monday, we were said, we had come to the determination collectively that we could not use some other contract, we were going to need to put together a document. I was out of my office most of Monday, working with another community. By Monday afternoon, Manager Cavalli, he sent me the sample material. By Monday afternoon, manager Cavalli, he sent me the sample materials from the other jurisdiction and said by Tuesday, I will, by Tuesday morning, I will get you a draft, if you can turn it around to me as quickly as possible. He did precisely that. I reviewed the draft, and one of the things they said was, we don't have the materials from last year. Given the way that your government ran in April and May of last year, I was the repository for a lot of that documentation. I took that documentation, said, hey, based on the workload you have, I'll adapt the document. I adapted that document after having two municipal meetings last night, and I got it to the manager at roughly ten thirty PM last night. After which point, I handled another issue for the chief and emailed him around eleven thirty PM last night. This morning, we agreed that these are the materials, and we published them to you. It is not our intention to create undue delay. It is certainly our desire to provide you prompt delivery of services and detailed delivery of services with ample time to review this. Having looked at the documents and knowing what we were going to publish, and knowing that we've had the opportunity last year to define a lot of the scope of what your manager looks like, I did not think it of as much consequence to deliver those materials and that fraction. If that was not what you would have desired, my apologies for any inconvenience that it could be created. We are concurrently working on about a dozen different things that are all time sensitive. That said, the invitation to bid before you, again, is not a contract, is not an invitation to hire an FTE. It's an invitation to get somebody who will get you an FTE. What you are doing in the invitation to bid is signaling to the responding party to the kind of candidate you're looking for. That doesn't mean that you can't refine what they are ultimately going to publish. This is so they know, we're looking for a manager, this is what a manager generally looks like. If between now and when you retain a executive search firm, you wish to fine tune those, we have that flexibility. You're not locked into saying, oh, we also would love to have somebody who's C++ certified and has, you know, and has a Bitcoin wallet with so many NFTs in it. If you want to start creating, we can do that between now and then. But this is intended to say, this is generally the kind of thing we need to recruit for. Do you have the capacity to do it? And get invitations to bid. So ultimately, that's your decision. I hope I addressed your question earlier.
Is this the deal that costs about thirty five thousand dollars to have someone do it?
I wouldn't lock in that price, but I would say the quotes that you saw last week ranged anywhere from the low twenties to the mid thirties in terms of invitations to bid. But there are smaller shows in town who may say, hey, this is a smaller community, and they may be able to provide you a more lean quote. That's what the invitation to bid is to determine. But yes, based on the materials you saw last week, when you saw those numbers, this is what that's for.
Sebastian, do you even want the public side of information?
And a lot of these firms also have, to use an outdated term, they have their own rolodex of applicants who they've helped move around, and they also already, in some instances, say, oh, you're looking for one of those. I just helped somebody in Montana who was a candidate, they were second place. You know, or to take a coastal community, somebody in Pensacola who fell just short. Let me make sure they know about this too. So there's, yes, they're gonna find, but a lot of these firms, because of the work in the space, they know who's, you know, on the merry-go-round.
With the time situation that we have, it seems like to me, we would be better off getting an interim town manager and being able to lay everything out the way that we want it, instead of being rushed into a position.
That's certainly your prerogative. You have that option. I would tell you that there's nothing that prevents you from a dual track, where you get an interim and simultaneously recruit. But if it is the will of this body to say, you know what, we don't want to recruit a long-term manager, we want to recruit an interim manager, then maybe we need to have the discussion of what that is. That's a separate process. You might remember last time in late April last year, when we were recruiting Lynn, we had already, when we recruited Lynn, we said, we're recruiting an interim, and we're gonna start the process for the long term, and maybe we don't need it if she's really good, and you know, it happened. But we kind of started those on a dual track. So you can either start them on a dual track, or you can go single track and say, let's just find ourselves an interim manager and let them help us decide what the long-term manager's gonna look like. Some communities do that and have interim managers for an extended period of time, or an interim attorney for an extended period of time. That's ultimately your call.
What do you think an extended amount of time would be?
I, there are so many subjective adjectives in that, I wouldn't dare get into those waters.
And who do you think would be the interim town manager?
I would think that it would be up to, if we hired a company, Imagine That, to come up with a interim manager.
Okay, well, that's assuming that we hire them. And then he also said that his staff was not interested in being an interim town manager. Correct. He was very specific with that at the last meeting, that he did not have any staff to provide an interim town manager, because his staff was not interested.
That's, I don't know, I'm gonna have to check on that, because
Exactly what he said, exactly what he said.
Well, I know what he said, but the conditions that he was speaking of.
Well, that's not gonna work, in my opinion. We absolutely completely need to move on this. This is not requiring us to hire any employee. This is also not requiring us to hire any of these companies that come to bid. But we can't just sit here and do nothing. We have serious things and serious deadlines approaching, and we need a town manager. I know you guys are just pushing for Imagine That, that's evident. But it's even in our charter that a company cannot run our town. Our charter states a town manager, we must hire one.
And if we go right into a town manager and then move into a town manager, is that not a bigger fee? Because we did this, and now we're moving on to this. So that fee would go from twenty to thirty thousand to more, because we didn't just do it for the town manager? We would be having two separate people then, right? We'd be hiring for two separate people?
I don't know that I fully understand your question. I will tell you that the cost of acquiring thus far, let me back up. Last meeting, we talked about the need to recruit a manager. And there's a few ways you can do that. Last year, we used the senior advisor program through Florida League of Cities. They respectfully declined to be engaged for that purpose this time around. You then have the options of either using an executive search firm. Some communities just publish themselves. It's my understanding right now, for example, the city of Beller Beach did just that, or the, yeah, who is the city? Beller Beach did just that. Bel Air is looking at a similar process that did not involve a search firm. I would submit to you that those communities are differently situated than you. They have, for example, in Beller Beach, they had a manager who's on his second round of being the manager there, and he has an interim manager behind him, and he has informally committed to functionally be a consultant after his departure. So there's continuity of government in his exit. The Bel Air manager exited, but has a robust staff behind him of people prepared. You folks have a lean team. So you have, you I promise you guys, I'm not trying to be long-winded, but I happen to know a lot about what happens in municipal government. And I want to make sure you have all the information you need to be successful. Yes, you will still incur, if you choose to go down this path, you will still incur the cost of an executive search firm down the road.
To do it, to
To do it then. But if you, how you acquire your interim manager, I don't know, we haven't had that discussion yet. So I don't know what compounding costs. If you're talking about a private firm serving that function, if you're talking about a search firm for the interim, if you're talking about running legal ads, nothing in this world is bringing the cost keep going up. Or as it's said in a hip hop song, yesterday's price is not today's price. So I don't know how that will work.
By using the firm, we still have the bone off, do they do the selection, do they do, I mean, how that
And that's what we're paying them for. So like, we would get, what Bonnie was concerned about before, well, we're not exactly sure what we want. Yes, he printed out what we had last time, but as, you know, attorney Morris said, maybe we want to get some changes. Maybe we want something slightly different this time. That is what we would tell this company. And they would go out and do all the hard work and present us with the candidates, exactly what we asked for. But we're not gonna get anybody, and we're not even gonna start the search process, we don't do this.
The private search firm is just Pam getting paid. Pam is the name of the senior advisor you worked, all of you worked with last year. It's a private company doing that. You are the only body in this town that can appoint a town manager. So nobody else can do that for you, and they're not gonna tell you, we've done the whole search, and you need to hire Jim. They're gonna say, we have a Jim, an Edith, a Jan, a Tim, who do you want?
They're just putting out there.
Correct.
They are recruiting, they're a headhunter.
And they'll weed out all the unqualified candidates, you know, there's tons of those that come in. And they'll present us with the ones that are actually qualified. And that's not by their standards, that's by the standards that we decide at council in the job description.
They'll work with you on the questionnaire and things like that as well.
But so the problem is, I don't want to make the same mistake yet again. Okay, so, one moment, please. We went and, like I said last week, there was never a transition plan from our previous type of government to this type of government. So all of the things that needed to be done to bring us into a town manager-type government, the majority have not been done, okay? And so it is unfair to say, well, we need a town manager. But the reality is, is we need somebody to come in and clean up the past, how are eight years worth of stuff that has never been done. So that needs
So fast.
Or MuniCo, shall I go along? I mean, I It's on your, you're a town manager and a budget, though. I need someone to do the budget. Excuse me? We need a town manager to do the budget. You can also
They want to hire Imagine That.
But there are so many things. So what I'm saying is, we can't make the same mistake again and assume somebody can come in. They have to be somebody that understands the revenue stream. Are we leaving any taxes out on the ground, on the floor, you know? Or is there extra money that we can get? Have we done the best for our building department? Are we charging the people proper amount of money? All of these things that need to be done, you just can't use the most simplistic town manager job description and then have them come in, and it's an absolute mess. He said we could add to the job description. This was just meant to find us, to find a firm that would get us moving along for a town manager. All of that stuff isn't gonna find us a town manager body to get this town moving and doing the things that it has to do by the deadline. It goes back to defining your scope of work. So within our scope of work, we need to say, you know, this has not been done. This isn't been updated, this isn't done. And you think that's gonna find us a town manager by putting in a scope of work, saying, what hasn't been done? You have to get somebody that is willing to do that stuff. You had a person that was willing, and you didn't give them a chance. You had them for six months before you irritated them so bad that you wanted to quit. You had a town manager for six months. I can still say, we had a town manager for six months, Rob, okay?
It's the way.
I don't care, we had a town manager. You say it your way, I'll say it my way. But I mean, that's, I mean, we can't set somebody up to fail. You did. Is what I'm saying. You did. And so you have to somehow define this plethora of work that needs to be done. While when we put out for a person, they need to be a certain mindset. They need to be more of a transformer person. They need to be somebody that comes in that likes to clean up messes.
For timeframe, anyways, regardless, we're gonna need a consulting firm, because there's not enough time, even if we were to say yes on this, to get somebody in place in time. And, I mean, you were even saying it, right? Am I correct, for the time, it just wouldn't happen in time?
The short answer is, Pete's last day on the sixty day schedule is before any timeline that we conceivably put in here. You will need an interim manager regardless. How much you intend to rely on your interim manager, what function they will serve, what tasks you anticipate them completing, is your prerogative. I will tell you, you have a budget that is due, must be adopted by October first, and this community has come posted that clip before. But you have filings with FEMA and the federal government and state that need to be done by July. Your audit needs to be, or sooner than that perhaps, your audit needs to be complete by July. By law, and by law, your audit can't be extended beyond that date. There, the difference between private management and managing a public entity is a public entity has a series of regulatory mandates it must fulfill. And so as we talk, and many of those seem to happen in Florida, in what we would call the middle of the year, in the summer months. You have, your interim manager, just keeping the ship steady, has plenty to do. I, and if your vision is that they would just be here for the summer, at this point, I'm going to candidly tell you, I am well beyond giving you legal advice, I'm giving you practical insights.
So we discussed last week, I guess it was, bringing in executive help for Pete, where does that stand?
Thank you for that question. We have, so that is an item on the agenda tonight. Where that stands is, we started by adopting ordinance on procurement guidelines. Your procurement guidelines, as we've established, are restricted, as currently framed. You only, without going to bid, which requires, which we talked about at some length last week, require you to establish exactly what the scope of services would be, or what a request or proposal would want. You would have to frame that document, agree on what it says. It would be much longer than the two pages we're discussing today. But we would craft a request or proposal, under our current procurement guidelines, craft a request or proposal, wait for the time back, have people submit, rank them, pick them, just like we did the solid waste, and pick somebody. That's a seven to nine week lead time to get help in here. Pete's gone sooner than that. We have a proposal, at least one proposal, and the manager has the manager, it's my understanding and speaking with the manager, that he and Anna, between the two of them, have called roughly seven different companies, because in order to go, or perhaps six. But the, in, his authority is only to ten thousand dollars. You heard from one entity last week that told you they're prepared to come in soon, and they recognize that your staff needs help, and they're prepared to help. They quoted you at roughly a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for hourly work. Right, and one seventy-five for Mr. Duncan himself, and roughly twelve hundred dollars an hour weekly. I may be off by a hundred dollars in either direction, but doing the math, that gets you about eighty hours of runway on one twenty-five an hour only. And you would have some one seventy-five an hour work at the roughly twelve hundred, it gets you closer to six weeks. And then after that, you would have to, during that time, you would have to go to RFP or otherwise anyways. You could not just keep going for a series of ten thousand dollar contracts, that would be seen as an attempt to circumvent the procurement guidelines. That is part of why we've adopted, what we've adopted on first reading tonight. Because what my recommendation was, based on the guidance that you had given staff during, at the conclusion of the second meeting last week, you told us, we want three things. We want an executive search firm recruitment document, solicitation document. We want executive assistance to the manager, and we want a bookkeeping solution. And we've been trying to work through those linear, but we'll jump to number two. Where are we with the executive search firm, I mean, the executive assistance to the manager? You can only get so much, up to ten thousand dollars. In order to do that, you have one proposal, but under your procurement guidelines, you need at least three written proposals or estimates. Your manager and clerk have made several phone calls in an effort to get you other estimates, so you could reasonably comply with your procurement guidelines, which you were also very adamant you wanted to adhere to, and recognized you needed to adhere to. So even if there was one company that was the shining beacon on the hill for you right now, you need to have three estimates. We solicited those, we haven't got them yet. We've had some indications, hey, we're looking at about one fifty, we're one thirty-five, but we'll get you something concrete, we just can't do it in forty-eight hours or less. I told you at the conclusion of last meeting, that at this meeting, we would report to you on our progress. But please understand that we would not necessarily have all the estimates back. And I remember vividly that I gave you a tangible example, that last year, I had called Benson's personal cell phone, called him, spoke to him, and he said, listen, I slipped and fell, I had an arm injury, I'm flying to like Jackson Hole or something, I'll get back to you. And I didn't have my answer by the time of my meeting, I had it maybe two or three days later. And so that's where we stand. The inquiries have been made. I spoke with the principal, Imagine That, as recently as this afternoon at three o'clock. He and I talked about it, and I explained what He and I talked about it, and I explained what my advice to management was, which was, "Your procurement guidelines state this, and there's no way around them." And so, absence additional quotes, I don't, the management is not in a position, based on the charter, to proceed with any contract. And that my broader view was, if and when we get that, and we identify from that field who it is we wish to proceed with, that that should likely be a contract of reduced scope. I mean, and not scope of time, reduced duration. So, let's say, three to five weeks that we easily should easily be within the $10,000 authority, and by the time that runs, this, this, the other ordinance, based on how it proceeded tonight, would likely be adopted on second reading, and that may offer you more flexibility in procuring near-term executive assistance. But based on your current guidelines, we can't just enter into a contract with one person today. And so, we are doing the diligence, and in speaking with the principal of Imagine That, he was quite adamant that his business has no interest in having, in coming into any community under guise that would be anything less than what has been advised to the town council and the manager. He doesn't, he also does not want to be perceived as trying to, no more than you wish to, trying to skirt or be cute about rules. And so, that's where we stand. He spoke with the manager, he spoke with me. We were all in agreement that that needs to come back to this council at a later date, perhaps as soon as next week, perhaps two weeks, and, and that may, that may also be dictated by your availability. The time that we can run that out, if we can get some synchronicity and get a few things done in one meeting, awesome. Uh, but that is where we stand with that. It has not been neglected at all. Uh, it has been advanced day over day.
So, when we can have an opportunity, you know, like, um...
I can't give you a date certainty. I, I'm, we're, we're working diligently, I just can't give you a date certainty.
So, the first thing...
I'm not asking for a date, I'm asking for, I mean, I don't want like three quotes or whatever of firms that I have to research and stuff, the night that I come to a meeting.
Understood. In the moment that we have the information in a way that is capable of being, that is efficient and capable of being transmitted and digested, we would do that. We're not, at no point have we sat on information.
Randy, so you're saying the very first thing we should do is get the procurement ordinance taken care of?
We did.
Well, we gotta have a second reading and get that done, and approve it.
I, I, I will say, I will use, I will use a phrase I'm known for using in my family. Two things can be true. We need to move forward on the ordinance. We need to move forward on determining what path this council wishes to use to address the fact that its manager will be gone in a little more than, a little less than 45 days. Personally, I don't... I don't have an opinion on what that is, because it is your crux. You, you appoint the manager. That decision is made by a majority of this body. We need guidance on whether, on how you wish to fill that decision. But I don't think, we don't, we are not, we don't have the luxury of taking things one at a time. We have to take certain tasks concurrently at this time. That would be my advice to you.
No matter what we do, we're going to have to have an interim manager. Is that not correct?
Correct.
And the way we're, we're going to get that interim manager is how?
You tell me. That's, that's really, that's really where we're at. You, you need to tell us, um, if, if it's your vision that we will separately contract for that service, if that's the direction we're moving in, we need to know that. As we talk about recruiting executive assistants, uh, we need to know that that's one of the quotes we're asking for. Thus far, what we've been, what our charge was, was find somebody to support the manager in the near term. Uh, and if you're talking about privately securing that, then we need to know that. If you're, if you want, wish to do a separate recruitment and put it on the website, and put it on monster.com, and indeed, we need to know that. We, we, we need some guidance from you on how you wish to proceed.
Walk into the line.
Please, please, yeah. Coaches for some such and more reasons, please make sure you're...
A regular manager. Getting a regular manager in here, we don't have time to do so, okay? We need to get an interim manager in here, and I think the way, you know, I, I know we discuss these two every time I say something about, you know, Imagine That, but they are the professionals, you know? Do you have any ideas how to get an interim manager?
He already told us at the last meeting, he was not interested in finding us a manager. He said that their firm did not do that.
Intraimanager he can't produce.
He did not tell us that, in, in no way, shape, or form at the meeting last week. He, he said he was not interested in getting us a manager. That was not a good point.
Do you have any ideas how to get an interim manager?
No, I don't. That's why you have a town manager and, and an attorney that told you 100 times what we needed to do.
I'm sure if we accepted this invitation to bid, one of these firms might be able to help us find an interim manager.
How did I say it, Rob? I'm sure you can assist.
Alternatively, I, I can tell you, um, I, I mentioned this at the meeting last week, uh, that, much like in the NFL, when coaches move, everybody kind of knows who's on the move. I am aware of some people, nobody who specifically said, "Hey, I want to be here," but people who are looking for opportunities. I will reach out to my contact and see if I have anybody who's privately interested that we can, because that, recruiting an interim manager, depending on what you want to do, doesn't require, uh, RTP. You're filling a position. So, if there was, for example, a retired manager from another community, uh, let's say, let's say there was no Imagine That, and Steve Spina was just out there, and Steve's like, "If you guys need somebody for like eight weeks, I'll do it." And I'm, I'm, I'm trying to give an example without suggesting I'm trying to coach somebody's personnel, it's just a name you know. If you, if you, if there was, you know, the former manager of Cape Coral, to use a city that we, we're not near and where I grew up. If the former manager from Cape Coral had just retired, and I called him and said, "Hey, retirement sounds boring, want to come?" And they were willing to do that, you could just appoint somebody like that if they, if you felt that they were qualified. But ultimately, that would still come from you. So, I can make some calls, not, and I'm not suggesting I'm a recruiter. I'm a public servant. Uh, but we can look at formal, we can look at formal avenues and see if we can find a person. That person's going to have a lot to do. Uh, we can, we can get the executive assistance search, um, the executive assistance to the manager search, and see if through that, if they offer, uh, full-time personnel who'd be willing to, or part-time person, whatever. I, I know those words get loaded for you guys. A person on their staff that can be, who's available to occupy that office. If you already had somebody in place and you knew the window was tight, I, I don't know that you have any personnel in your town. I mean, again, if we don't, if we don't solve the problem, if we don't have a separate solution, by operation of the documents memorialized in this community, your chief will become your interim manager, until such time as you designate someone else. So, the question is, what happens if we do nothing, or what happens if we don't agree on a solution? That's what happens. Your chief becomes your manager. I will tell you, having talked to chiefs who do that, they don't like to do it for a long time. They got other stuff to do. Um, and, and none of them are terribly excited about producing the entire city's budget. Um, but that's what would happen if we don't get a person. Just so we know, the potential, you know, the multiverse of it all.
And that person would do the budget. The chief of police would do the budget.
Or whomever they designate, or whomever they separately contract. They will be principally responsible for the budget per your charter. They will answer for it. They will present it. But that doesn't prevent them from delegating the task to somebody if they can get somebody on their staff, a team who has that know-how. If it were that, let's say, Erica in your, in your police department had, you know, past life worked at, you know, Price Waterhouse Cooper, and audited municipal communities, and was like, "I happen to be able to do that." Nothing prevents the chief from saying, "Hey, I really need your help. I'm designating you as the person who's going to help me through this." They could do that, but ultimately, it's the manager who presents it. It's the manager's, it's the manager's proposal that becomes your document.
How long can the chief of police be the chief of police and the town manager, right?
I've never been a chief of police or a manager, so I don't know. Um, there's some attorney general opinions on that, but, um, the simple fact, I, I, there's not a, there's not a date, a specific number of days.
So, I still think it comes down to, even if we said, "Okay, we want to go out to get a firm, okay?" We still don't have a list of activities that need to be done, and the timelines that they need to be completed by. And we said that we needed to get some executive help. So, what is this executive help going to be doing? What timelines? What functions do we have to do as a town? It would be helpful to know that.
Can, can we do this? Can we get the executive help that we need? Because we're going to need executive help. And that was part of the procurement that he was trying to do, so we could get the additional help, the bookkeeper, the, the other stuff. But this, the interim town manager, this, that this speaks up the process, but then try to find this town manager, and we're all going to have to put in, so...
Well, we still don't know what we're going to, oh, we'll get that later. But still, we need to, you know, we need to get, really, how, we need to get all of these items that we're, that we have to do as a town. By the time we get all those items out of budget, we'll be long gone, and we won't be able to get it done. That should be something that is very easy for any executive to provide us.
I will candidly submit to you the budget document. I've never once heard the budget document in a community described as an easy thing to do.
I didn't say, I said, "All of the items that you called out about 10 minutes ago, at least, you called out about 10 things." And you said that we had, um, in Florida, we usually do them in the summertime. What are all these things? I am only aware of the budget. You mentioned other things. So, what are the timelines of these things need to be done? How many hours need to take to do those? That is the information that we need to see about getting executive help.
I understand.
I mean, that's not an unfair question, or...
I, I don't know that it's necessarily a question to begin with, but I would submit to you that your staff is aware of what needs doing. The ordinary function of the town council is not to be provided an itemized list of every executive and administrative task that's being performed.
Well, when somebody's leaving, it's not an unreasonable request. Yes, it is.
I, I understand that. I understand that perspective for sure. And I can tell you that your manager has already talked to me about, he and I spoke for roughly 20 to 30 minutes yesterday, about a panoply of issues, uh, that will need addressing. Um, if you want to start giving a list, we can start giving a list. CRS filings get done in the summer, uh, before July, is that correct? Your audit by, by administrative code has to be done by...
And this is, those are a five-year recertification, so we have site visits, it's very intensive.
There's, there's a re, a whole recertification process through that. By the way, we were hoping to use some of the resources in the county, and they made it clear that they can't do that for us. They're happy to tell us, "Looks good, gold star, keep it up," but they're not going to draft or do anything like that. Another issue, uh, that you have on the horizon, my RFP, another issue you have on the horizon, and yesterday, uh, Manager Cavalli had talked to, in the last three days, and talked to Largo, Gulfport, and the city of Pinellas Park about providing, um, potentially providing bookkeeping services through an interlocal agreement. Uh, each of them said, "No." Pinellas Park was kind enough to say, "Give us a call." Uh, "No, but give us a call." He gave them a call, and in giving them a call, they communicated to him that your building department, uh, through which they've provided interlocal services for, I think, over a decade, uh, they're not willing or able to provide that service after December. Uh, so, so that's another thing that will be on the list. Um, when I communicated to you, my, uh, my intention, uh, my, my, my recommendation that you competitively bid attorney contract services, embedded in that was an email from, I believe, February 3rd, where I had an itemized list of, of a series of tasks categorized by procurement, ordinances, et cetera. And I continue to track that document, and that's something that the manager and I, you know, almost on a quarterly basis have exchanged since he's begun, and I can, and, and as I look at the prospect of transitioning out, I'm beginning to make that list to include your continuing code review, chapter two, chapter 54, chapter two, your administration, chapter 54, your signed code revision to come in compliance with Supreme Court. There's just a lot of things. And so, to provide you an exhaustive list doesn't help you get past the fact that you have personnel vacancies.
Well, I'm not saying that. The whole thing is, that it is an exhaustive list, so the whole thing is...
No, it's not exhaustive. Exhaustive means every single thing. There's a lot more.
How are we going to transition? This should be a transition period.
It shouldn't.
And so, we need some executive people to come in, and I think that should be the priority.
And nobody, but, but nobody's disagreeing with that notion, and we all agree with the notion that you need people. We, the staff, just want to know how you want to do it. And, and, and I, 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 I want to apologize, because I feel like I'm in a position where I'm somehow having point counterpoint. That's not my aim. My aim is to provide your advice, and ultimately, you folks make decisions. I have never once made a decision here. That's not my role, and I'm not going to start that. I've, I've given you advice, I'd like you, I, 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 to the extent I've overstepped my apologies, and I'd like to see the floor back to the people who should be helping.
And instead of a list, I think we should be a little more concerned why this laundry list of no one wants to help out Kansas City to do anything. No one wants to help us find a bookkeeper, an executive this, and then, no one wants to help us do anything. Instead of worrying about a list, we should be worrying about where we're going to get the people that are going to come in here to help us, instead of worrying about what's on a list. That's kind of my point. We need to hire all soldiers.
Okay. The last transition cost us, as I said the last meeting, over $150,000 total. We cannot keep this up as a town. We cannot afford it. I feel like we're going in circles here, and we're wasting a lot of time on this debate. Um, I'm not sure, but I'm feeling revived. I feel like I might have a majority here. I would like to, I just like, accept this invitation to bid and put it out. Do I have a second? I need a second.
Well, you need to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to put out this invitation to bid.
I'll second. I'm watch.
And I think we need to take a vote.
Well, before you do, because you have a motion on the floor, I recommend, given the amount of discourse, I recommend you go to public comment, but I would separately just say, if you're going to do that, it would just be helpful, do we, do we have your authority on staff as we finalize this, to finalize the timeline that's closer to August 2022 for anticipated completion? That doesn't mean you can't finish sooner, but realistically, that, that timeline might discourage respondents, uh, based on the, the average recruitment timeline, as you've heard in the past, anywhere from two to three months.
Well, yes, because as you said, this is just to get the ball rolling, and we understand that we still need to bring in some kind of...
Well, I just think that right now, there's a light 15...
Yes, I'm saying, that's fine. I'm just kind of making a blanket statement, so everyone can...
Okay, thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor again.
So, public comment?
We need that public comment, actually, to be, um, to have done with your, um, presentation.
Thank you for the reminder. There was public comment earlier. It's at, it's at your discretion whether it should be reopened or not. If absent additional public comment, it would be for this body to discuss and vote.
Actually, like, your residents would like to speak overall, uh, they all be that up to you, if, uh, if you want to get...
I don't want this to get any more heated. I think that we need to bring in professional people to help us out.
That's exactly what I, that's exactly what I recommend me to write it, yeah. Public comment. Ready?
Just maintain the floor.
What do you say? Uh, we, I think we need to get a town manager, and I also think we need, uh, professional help as well, so, um, I, I think we both...
I also, I don't, you know, I want a captain of the ship who knows how, how to steer us in the right directions.
Would I, how much do you want professional help, or how much do you want, do you want all professional help?
I don't see how I get a town manager in here without having everything straightened out before that town manager takes possession.
But you never afford that. Did you?
I would say, that's, that would be our job as a city council, to, to establish a fact, this is the road we're going to go down, and this is how we're going to do so. And the way we need to go down that road is by having professional people come in and tell us, give us different options that we can follow, okay? I, I, I've said this before, you know, Barbara, you don't have the ability to run this town.
You don't, you don't.
Y'all applauding everything else?
Really?
If you were here at the last meeting, you heard me sit up here and say, "Barbara, you don't know how. Megan, you don't know how. I don't know how. He doesn't know how. Bonnie doesn't know how."
And he does.
And, uh, sir, no comments, please. So, what I think we should do as a council...
Well, I had the motion on the floor, and it's open to a vote, so that's why I wanted to make sure that, you know?
He can, he can speak to the motion then.
All right, well, we'd still like to...
What I, what I think we should do, and I know how aggravating it is to you people, What I, what I think we should do, and I know how aggravating it is to you people, but I think we need to get professional help in here that will set us on the correct path that we need to go down. And that, and my only, you know, I only know Imagine That, okay? Do you know of somebody else? Do you know, do you know, do you know of somebody else?
No, but why can't we?
We're waiting, we're waiting on your votes to come in.
Do you know of someone else?
No, but I could probably find someone.
He does the waiting on quotes. Yes, but that, because we need.
I, I don't understand why you're so bent on having Imagine That to do it without having someone else give a opinion.
They, they have good people to do everything.
They have the team.
So why do you need Imagine That?
Well, that's how I feel about it. Bonnie?
I agree, I think what he did is professional help, you know? There's just no doubt in my mind. And I, like, like I started, I don't think that we have the, um, I don't think we have enough of what we need to do in the new salary and everything else.
Talking that a white plane.
Um, to even put down what we're looking for, because like I say, if we use the last scope of work, the last, um, information that we used before, that's disrepresenting actually what we need.
Aren't we just picking to say that we want help? We're not voting on a particular company to commit help?
We can't vote on it.
We're not even choosing exactly what we want yet, so this, I don't think we're having.
They're just saying we want help.
We still have time to do that.
So we're not saying we want Imagine That or any other company down the street. Joe's Bar, Grill, whoever.
Professional guidance is what we need.
Okay.
Isn't this a mess? In this bunch of stuff, there is a.
That's what this invitation, this is more why that we don't.
Folks, as you talk over each other, it's difficult for the public to hear your comments. Please consider your comments one at a time.
This is specifically for town managers.
But isn't this somewhere? I think it's a job description. I don't know, but I think it is.
It's just an example to them of what we have now, so they understand how our town functions as a president. That does not mean we want you to go out and find exactly that again. It's not. It's just to introduce them to our town and to introduce them to our form of government and what our town manager's current responsibilities are. That's all it is. It's not the application, that's not what they're looking for. It's just to give the companies an idea.
They will be interviewing you, they will be doing a questionnaire, and again, trying to further craft what the person that you're looking for is doing their process. That's what they're getting paid for.
Without this procurement thing done, Randy, we can't really make too much of a decision tonight, can we?
You're making a decision that I have.
There's a motion on the floor to use the invitation bid documents. If you, if the motion ultimately fails, we would not do anything presently. The staff has no other direction presently to secure a manager in the distant horizon. Uh, staff is already working towards getting you quotes for executive assistance, uh, and, and also your, your procurement ordinance. Uh, you, thus far, that has been structured as a search for assistance to a sitting manager, not, um, not quotes for a contracted manager. Uh, that, that track can start after tonight if we have that direction. Uh, but if you don't do this, if, if the motion fails, we're not gonna do anything with the invitation to bid you see before you. We would move through the agenda, which presently has department reports, officer reports, and adjournment, comments in adjournment.
I mean, I personally think it would be smarter to try to get an interim town manager out. And, um, as they come in and see what the town needs done and what needs to be done in the town, then if they could assist us finding a, a full-time town manager, I think that would be as smart of them to do.
Right.
Sounds like it.
I think we need the guidance from that, uh, I, I would agree with that part of it. But do we need, do we need them, do we streamline them a little bit more?
We, we part of it ourselves. We have to get past the procurement before we can then discuss them. But after we get past that, then, yes, we can, we can tell, this is what we want. This is how we want it done. How do you, how do you accomplish that for us?
Even if we hired Imagine That, right? They do want to get Pete help, and we choose a, a higher Imagine That, okay? They had made it very clear at the last meeting, they will not fill the interim town manager position. Their staff members are not interested. And they also said that they will not provide help finding a town manager. That is not their job. So again, we could hire Imagine That for all the help in the world. We still need to do this because they will not at any point help us with the town manager project.
That's because we have a town manager at this point.
No, it's not.
No, it's not. That is not their job, Rob, that's not their job. He made it so clear. I'll pull up the, the, all the meetings, I'll upload it to YouTube. I can pull it up right now, I'll play it for you. I'll put, I'll put my phone up through the microphone so everyone can hear it. They're all online.
I, I do recall saying something about, uh, the mayor, not, not the mayor, but I'm, I'm sorry.
The town manager position.
But he, he, he did state something that he couldn't help with procurement.
No, exactly. Imagine That will not help with the procurement of a town manager, and because of our salary, they have no staff member who's interested in being an interim. That was point-blank statement. So we could hire them to help with the budget. We could hire them to help with, uh, the building department when they pull out. We could hire to help them with tons of stuff. The town manager is not one of them. So that's why I just don't understand the fight with Imagine That right now. This is literally so separate. And I had the motion on the floor, and I, I still would like to try to vote. I mean, I don't know how it's gonna go anymore, but I did have a motion.
Megan, if there's no other comment on the motion, it would be appropriate to see if we will call it up.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmembers Amitis?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
No.
Vice Mayor Cummings?
No.
And Mayor Hal?
No.
So we shouldn't do nothing again. We've wasted two and a half hours of our time again, and we don't even have a person that we're gonna bring in to help us. What is it you people on this council want? I don't understand. Why, why do we even come to meetings and attend them? If no one's gonna vote to do anything outside the town? If I were the resident, I would never vote for any of you.
I can't leave for Rob to come, because he won't help with this. And I'm glad to know where this meeting comes.
Mr. Mayor, the next item.
He also said he won't come, all five of us are on board, and I'll say right now, I'm not on board. And I'll make it so clear.
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is department reports.
Want to start the, can I sit at least a department? Mike, you're up.
Can I ask one more question? With the parts of the procurement department, it's changing the description of procurement. We can always come back to what you presented us after we need a procurement and, and use the doc, the documents that. Can you bring that back? We can revisit that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna read it myself.
So, so I, I mean, that might be something we can revisit after we need.
I got it.
It's a whole talk we moved on and approved last time, and we go through with these activities. We posted on last night, we hired Peter.
Okay, all right. Mike, could you go ahead, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Um, the first thing, while we're on that topic, is just so you're aware, the police department goes through their reaccreditation cycle every three years. December is the police department's reaccreditation or accreditation with the CFA. So far as the filling in as town manager, my plate's full, so I'll tell you right now, it's not, number one, it's something I'm not interested in, nor would I have the time to do anything like that. So just so you're aware, ahead of time, we have to work on accreditation and other things to keep us accredited. Um, with that being said, um, this month, far as, uh, traffic education and enforcement, um, we conducted several details on Fifty-Eighth Street, Forty-Sixth Avenue, Four Horse, as well as our neighborhoods, um, Forty-Seventh Avenue neighborhood areas, um, for complaints, stop sign runners. Um, we did traffic violation stops for speed, uh, violation of traffic control devices, stop sign violations, and also texting while driving. And, um, we had a community policing and a town community event that was very successful, a movie in a park event, which took place on, uh, April fifteenth, great event. We, um, it was probably the biggest movie in the park events we had, it was close to two to three hundred attendees. So that was, that was really a great event. Um, there were a lot of kids that came out, and everybody had a good time. Um, we also participated in the National Drug Takeback Event, which, uh, occurred on April thirtieth. And, um, uh, for residents and different people in the communities, we have a collection box that we normally keep at the police department, but it's actually a, a national event that comes up, uh, every several months, and we support it to get the, uh, prescription medications off our streets. And we actually collected a hundred and forty-three pounds of prescription medications in one day. So a lot of, a lot of stuff turned in, a lot of drugs off the street that, you know, could be attained by children and people that don't need them. So it's a, it's a great event, and, um, it was very well supported. Um, upcoming events, we have the, uh, Kansas City Fishing Event, um, which had some brochures up on the table back there. And then also, we have the, uh, July fourth event, which we started preparation for. So those are a couple of things we have going on. Um, we're also coming into hurricane season, so I just want to remind everybody, the, um, the county, Pinellas County, has a great website with resources for hurricane preparedness, um, as well as special needs. So, um, make sure you go on there if you have any special needs that you need registered for. There's also some hard copy forms, which I let someone in the back table add more. So if you're, if you don't have computer access, you can't fill out the, uh, hard copy form and, uh, get it in. So that way, the, uh, fire department and the county EMS has the ability to know your needs and can respond, uh, if we get into a hurricane situation. Um, as far as the town goes, um, I inspected our town satellite phone, uh, recently, this past week, and made sure it was operational, got it all charged up, made sure we picked proper numbers and all that. Um, I tested our eight hundred megahertz radio system, uh, with the Pinellas County EOC to make sure we have direct communication. Um, I also participated in the Pinellas County EOC Hurricane, uh, tabletop event this past week, um, which was a great event, uh, went through that exercise. And we also have, uh, a lot of our equipment and resources we prepared for, um, upcoming hurri, hurricane season, uh, to include our ATV Polaris Ranger, um, and also Ken and his staff has gone through some of our, uh, emergency management, um, hurricane prepared supplies, and using the process of painting new replacement ones that stuff's gone out of shelf life. Um, so that's some of the things we have going on. And then we also on our town, uh, face, Facebook page and also our website, we also, uh, inserted the, uh, the EOC resources, so you can go on there also and get information on special need shelters and different shelters, um, as needed. And, um, that's pretty much all I have at this point, if there is any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm very proud. Mike's been very involved with getting involved with the emergency management community and getting us prepared for the upcoming season. So I just wanna thank him for that. And that being said, we've invited Susan Wischel, excuse me.
Well, there.
Well, I can't say that. But we invited her to, uh, to speak a little bit about hurricane season.
Before we go to get to that, I got one thing I'd like to say real quick, Megan. Next week, whenever we do this procurement thing.
Yeah.
I would strongly suggest that you bring that back up again for a vote on, on the, uh.
On the invitation to bid?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Let her go and get, figure out who's on first. Come back for this meeting, sit down, and make a decision at that time, okay? I don't, you're not dead in water. I'm just.
You're, I mean, we're leaving this town dead in water, so you don't have to talk, I mean, that's, that's it. You wanna, I'll bring, I'll gladly bring it up.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's working together, okay? That's what I suggest.
Okay.
Okay? Agreeable with you two?
Yes.
Barbara?
Absolutely.
Okay, then. That shows us working as a team, trying to figure out a problem, I would say.
Because we should have had the answer already, but.
Well, we move on. I don't know, I don't know. There's, there's several questions.
We appreciate you coming up with our nonsense.
Please step to the podium.
So, today, Red Law, the fire chief of Pinellas Park Fire Department. Um, this month, we have brought Sudan Bouwer. She is the emergency management coordinator for the city of Pinellas Park. Um, with hurricane season coming up, and, uh, please keep just focused on his involvement with emergency management. Great job. Uh, you know, when I talked to Pete, uh, last week, we talked, you know, about their communicate. That's all, the communication exercise, we go through the same thing as well, uh, with, uh, emergency management. Um, so what I'll do is let her continue on and go over her presentation, and I'll give you the fire presentation back, okay?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. So just to recap, um, what we say, yes, we participate in the Pinellas County exercise, and that was mainly to test our communications, our interoperability, and our coordination with the county EOC. Um, and my role is similar to what the chief does, is just to coordinate with our city on all the testing of, um, of all our devices during hurricane season. So we'll proceed to the next slide, if you don't mind. So this is an early forecast. Um, this came out in April from Colorado State University. They have a, uh, a top-notch, um, research center there, um, where they do tropical meteorology research. And they put out the first forecast of the season, and it's really generally spot-on. So it may change, there'll be another one coming out in June, um, and then Noah has one coming out in May. So we'll kind of compare notes and see, um, what they're predicting. But this is for the twenty twenty-two season, so nineteen named storms, nine hurricanes, four major. Next slide, please. So this gives you an idea of what happened last year. So we had twenty-one named storms. So, um, you know, we may, we may reach that, we may not. So this is kind of a recap of what we have by the numbers. Next slide, please. And these are just for fun, these are the names that we're gonna have for next year. Um, and then, do you go ahead? So the main thing that we do, uh, for Pinellas Park, our fire department, is that special needs registry. We're responsible for registering residents within Pinellas Park and also Kansas City, so that when there is an evacuation call, we are notified and we can, we can notify the residents and ask them if they still want to be evacuated. We provide the transportation, we take them to the shelters. So we have a whole database that we, um, that we manage every year. And then, as, as you can see here, we also take them to not only just the special needs shelters, but the general shelters with that transportation. Next slide, please. Um, recently, we sent out a postcard to all of our registrants to update their information. This was the first for us to send out this particular postcard, and we did get quite a bit of response back. Next slide. And this is just some of the information that we send out for our residents on, um, during, uh, hurricane prepared this week, which was the week of May first through seventh. And we just remind them to sign up for their Pinellas to make sure that they are prepared. Um, what I've added here is a presentation from the county that they gave out last year, I mean, uh, last week. And this is the new guide that just came out, and in fact, I have some on the table here. If any residents wants to take some with them, um, and this is the new hazard guide. So the other thing the county's doing, they are upgrading the website, which should be ready, um, mid-summer, possibly by July, maybe August. And then they're also improving the Ready Pinellas app, and that's gonna be an app that, they've had it for a while, but it's, uh, it hasn't been that user-friendly. So they're gonna make it a little bit user-friendly for residents to check shelters, uh, get some real-time information, and just be able to follow along, uh, as to what's happening during storm season. So the evacuation zones have also been updated with the new data, and that particular, I don't know if you can see, but you can see there's, there is some flight difference between the twenty-one and the twenty-twenty-two, um, evacuation zones. And the website to find your evacuation zone is storm.pinnellascounty.org.
Excuse me, that's on the website as well, and it's also on Facebook.
Yep, 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 perfect. So this is a new thing for the county. They have a lot of different tools on that particular website. So as you can see here, this is based on the twenty, uh, the census. Over ninety-three, uh, like, almost ninety-three thousand people have been affected with the new changes to the evacuation zones. So it'd be, it'd be a good idea just to go and check if you haven't checked for an evacuation in a while. Um, and this card has been, this is a postcard from the county. They sent it out to the residents who have been impacted by the dangers. So if you are one of those that received this, this postcard, then your evacuation will be, either for the benefit of the borough. And that's it. No, thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, yes. Is, is special needs, like if you have oxygen or you're on dialysis or something, they'll take you to a place that will constantly have electricity?
Yes. Yes, special needs covers not just any medical needs such as that, it also covers transportation needs. If you're, if someone does not have transportation to a shelter, that's what we consider a special need as well. So it's not just a medical need, it's also transportation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, CP, I really appreciate it. If you all have any, any questions that you feel in the future you would like, you know, answers to when it relates to emergency management, you can certainly send them either to me or to Pete, to me or to your friends. Now, I already, that's I paid for it for you. All right. On the fire department front on response, you see last month, we responded to a hundred and fifty-six emergency calls for the month of April. You can see that our numbers are quite up this year, we're almost, almost up a hundred, ninety-two, ninety-two, can't even count. About ninety-two calls this year, we started the first four months of the year, so quite a, been very busy. The busy season hasn't changed. EMS calls, normally February is the busiest month of, of the year. And we get into the area of about six hundred transports from the entire county. And just yesterday, they did six hundred and one transports. So the season is not slowing. We are seeing an increase in the emergency rooms. Fifty to sixty patients being held in the emergency rooms throughout the county are not having beds. You have some hospitals holding ICU patients down there. So it's, it's pretty, still pretty busy, pretty significant. I'm sure if you read the reports, the COVID numbers are going up a little bit again. But one of the big things that's going up and the big spike we see in the past two weeks has been influenza A. The numbers have gone up dramatically, it was very low. And actually, we've been really well through the flu season and then just the past two weeks, it's really spudding. One of the things that we're finding in, with Pinellas Park and our response area is what we call central calls. Central calls are really bad calls. And we're finding a lot more, a lot more calls that related to, you know, severe traumas, cardiac arrest, strokes, things like that. As well as some, you know, some really difficult calls. We've had calls that really are related to behavioral health, mental health, problems and things like that. So, you know, this mental health awareness month, man. But we've just seen, there's incredible stress in the community, which has been one of the issues. And I don't know if it's coming out of everything, you know, people spend so much time in their homes, so much time kind of locked down and now we're, we're getting out. And it's just a really strange phenomenon, it seems to be going on. So we're watching those things really closely. As far as, so we completed three fire inspections last month, you're up to ninety-five for the year. So I know Chief Claude Bulby was here last, last month. That's really all your high risk. We do all our high-risk at the beginning of the year, so that's, that's a new way that they began. So that's why you're seeing, you know, the numbers are stopping. We don't start at low risk again in the next month, we'll, we'll start in the low risk. You'll see more inspections, those are the small, you know, really mom pop things, seven, eleven, things like that. Versus your parking complexes and things with the hierarchy, the, the R C phone, that's kind of a trick. We did fourteen smoke alarms last month, so that's great. And four plans reviews in the month of April, so it's a pretty high number of, you know, we'll be doing these questions like this. So things are, things are picking up, business is moving, business is booming, you know. So do you all have any questions for me?
Can I ask a question? Hey, you're talking about mental health and my question is to you, the mental health, I want to know on my aspect of it, how many overdoses have we had in Kennet City area across the park?
I can't pull that number up because I wouldn't bring it.
But it's higher, right?
I can certainly bring it the next time. I will tell you that Pinellas, Pinellas Park, the city of Pinellas Park, is the highest concentration of overdoses in the county. And between us and Lellman, we really are the, the highest concentration of overdoses in, in the county. If you look at the heat maps and you see it runs down US nineteen, runs across Park Boulevard, comes down, runs down Sixty-second, fifty-four down. So whether I would call it inside the city of Kennet City, a lot of truly, what we're seeing here is, is Lellman type in that area, but yeah. We, we run a ton of overdoses and overdoses are up. But I'll be happy to bring that data next one.
Thank you.
And Chief, is there anything that we can do together for public education, any public event, anything to, you know, just to bring, bring attention to that, that problem?
So we work very hard with our pure, pure wellness and part of that is mentality. And it's not being afraid to talk. We've all got, I mean, we're standing here with my phone, right? I, I had it because I was looking at some notes, but I remembered them and that's why. We're all like this anymore. Really, we see a lot of that, we don't talk to each other, we talk through text kind of thing. And it, it's really, it's an amazing thing to see. See it because we've been doing, we've had a lot of difficult calls and we've been doing a lot of meetings with our crews and things like that. And getting out and being apart and being with each other, that type of stuff. And talking with people, not through electronics and not through Facebook, you know. I mean, when you're local, obviously you have to talk to people, you know, they're out of it. But it's that remembering that, hey, we can talk to each other, we can help each other, being empathetic with one another. And not being afraid to ask for, for help. That has really been one of the, one of the real positives. We started a program two years ago. We contracted for our firefighters and our police officers with a Tampa Bay Psychology Area Group of Specialized and First Responder Mental Health, Behavioral Health. And I get reports all the time and I have, so ten, ten of seven people are seeing that group. We use that as that, as our E A P. And we've, we, we cover it as part of our E A P program and everything like that. So, you know, people mean that they were looking for things, they're looking for people to talk to. But that's really been the big thing that has helped with keeping a lot of our stress, just getting out and talking with each other and, and opening up, you know. I think we're very, we're closed off for so long and, you know, we're just locked into our electronic communication. And I think people are dead kind of communicating, talking to each other. And there's a lot of negativity in the world. I did an education, supervisor education on customer service with our department at the end of last month. And, you know, one of, one of my slides, or one of those, you know, the world's become really mean. Everything you see and everything you talk about is just, you know, it's being really mean. And I was talking to them about providing customer service to people and why people like the fire department. They go, we're right here, nice, we're kind, we're here to help you. And, but, you know, we all got nice features. You know, we can disagree, we can fight, you know, we can do whatever, but in the end, right? We're all human beings, we all need people to be nice to us as well. You know, it makes me feel a lot better a lot of times to be nice to someone than it does even for them to be nice to me, so. That's my advice and that's, you know, comes from our pure, pure wellness stuff, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll bring the overdose data for, what is, I gave you a little comparative of how it is throughout the county and how it is compared to other areas.
Just to break a little deal, pass that to you so you don't have to wait.
That's, that's fine. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just a quick update from Public Works as performing with the chief and staff. We've been working to get around, getting prepared for the hurricane, working with, checking all of our equipment, make sure it's all ready to go. Then I'm getting our supplies and everything ready as far as food and with the chainsaws and everything engaged and with the backhoe and all that. And prepping with now, with the events, pretty much what the chief said. The equipment is coming in, we're, we've been assembling and working with the, with some of the officers and stuff under vehicle and everything. Trying to support what we can for, you know, with the police department out home with the residents. You know, we've been answering and responding to some of their concerns, trying to help answer some of the stuff for them. And we made a sweep with doing road patching on the roads. We did over sixty bags of patch to try to bring up everything. It seems like every time we get a rain, you know, we go out, try to cover everything and get it back up where possible. And we had continued staff training. Yes, we went to, Jameson went to St. Pete College to do the course, got certified with that. So trying to keep up with that and then we're able to finally catch up with the speed sign on Forty-Sixth Avenue. You know, by fifty-fifth Street, it's been in opt, but we got a little bit. Just try to do our everyday operation and then try to pick up some of the small projects that we try to catch up with. Pretty much it is.
If you want to take that, Ken, and also just convey to you, I was staying late one day at town hall. I get a call and, you know, of course I'm going to pick up the phone at the front desk and talk to him. And the gentleman asked about some roadway patching. And he said, I know it's probably going to take you months. I go, you're going to laugh, I bet by the time you come home tomorrow, it'll be fixed. And it was, the gentleman called me back and was just absolutely amazed at the response of this at Kennet City. So I just want to again thank Ken for, for just doing a good job all the time. Let's see, so.
Building planning, building.
Yes, you have the list in front of you, you could look at that at your own leisure if you'd like. We're talking about the financial summary, as you can see, we're about fifty percent, it's way through the, through the year. And when you look at just the general breakdowns, again, it should be about fifty percent. But when you look at general government, it's at forty-seven percent, so we're three percent hungry budget on that. Law enforcement is just the only department that's just slightly higher. And again, it should be fifty percent, we're at fifty-two percent. Fire control is forty-eight percent. Building improvement, improvement, forty-eight percent. Emergency and disaster relief, like gosh, you know, we haven't had to use it yet and hopefully we won't. Public Works is at forty, forty-four percent. So we have way under budget when we look at that. And also the culture and recreation, we're at about forty percent. So when you, when you look at the expenditures, I think we're doing financially, you know, good with our money, you know, again, taking care of the talent. And of course, you have the, the breakdown for the line, I have to swim by one if you'd like. Now, moving on to the officer reports, Attorney Moore has stolen most of my thunder during this, this event. We're just pointing out a couple of things, looking at CRS, that's the Community Rating System. And as you saw with the evacuation routes, FEMA has done some recalculations of things and, and that does affect our, our flood insurance and the different zones that they're in. Talking through, through some of our contacts at Pinellas County, we've got a, a good, a good company that's worked, that we'd like to look into piggybacking from. I have, I've started reading through it, it's, what is it, I've almost a hundred-page document. So it's going to take a minute to go through it, as you very well know. But we need Attorney Moore up looking at that to see if we can piggyback, as did one of the Reddingtons. I believe it's North Reddington Beach, but don't hold on to that, what is it? Is it Reddington Beach? Thank you. Reddington Beach has also used this, this company. Talking to the retired ISO officer, she's scheduled to actually do our five-year recid, revisit, recertification cycle visit. And she goes, off the record, not off the record, but this is an amazing company. They've helped several small cities and in fact, they're the ones that work a lot with the county. So it will become very well recommended and we're looking into that because, again, that, that's a really upcoming situation that we have to deal with. There's certain things that have changed and if we don't meet those certain things, you can no longer be at a level in community as we are. If that's the case, there's other restrictions just to be in the program that we're going to have to do. The very important thing, this really affects people that are trying to buy or sell a house because if we lose our ability, not that we're under any threat of doing that, but if we don't do these things and we don't maintain at least a level ten, which is the lowest level of CRS, basically you can't, you can't be sold flood insurance. And as any of you know, if you're going to have a mortgage and if you're in a flood zone, you're going to have to meet that. It doesn't affect the entire city, but there are, are you guys?
Well, we all want that.
We do not want that. That is the worst thing because, you know, any of those houses in those zones, again, would drastically affect. Basically, we'd only be able to buy those cash, you know, again, being a little hyperbolic, but that really is the case. The building department also, I, I received a letter from Pinellas, Pinellas Park this morning and that's exactly what it says, that they, our current agreement expires on December eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. And that's when they are contemplating no longer doing any permitting services. But as you know, permits come and then or gets done after. So again, to kind of take care of us, there's some discussion of being able to extend the inspections by one month. Again, just to close out our, our building business to that. A couple of other things that I just did, in Unit Twelve, there was two large depressions. If you haven't been to that park, it's just kind of, you know, a cage that's kind of been created. And just to the west of there too, on the road, there's another, if you drive, it kind of bounces you around because there's a major depression there. I've been working with Pinellas County to, to look at, to see if it's their problem or our problem. I, you know, identified that there was two Sanater sewers, you know, wastewater manholes in that area. And I believe that was the case. So they just came out and they sent some television cameras, you know, and we televised it. They've accepted that that is their problem and they will be, you know, both preparing whatever pipe problem that's causing that depression as well as filling it in with what they call restoration work. On the way back from there, I just happened to notice by that, don't you notice, there's also a fire hydrant that seemed to be hit and it's kind of tipped on its side, so investigating who's the owner of that, basically maintains that Pinellas County is right. And they're going out there to inspect and make sure, you know, that any repairs were done to that as well. And just a small little thing that makes me happy, but I just got that notification by the FCCMA that they're going to provide me with a smaller board just for being a member for five years. So again, just a little, little kudo for being part of that organization. And that concludes my report. Ms. Davis?
No report.
No report. Barbara?
I just want to thank Randy and you for all the information, your, your work to give us in this pandemic. I know you've spent a lot of time providing for us and thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara.
Can we take you up on your offer, Randy?
Which offer is that?
For an interim?
For an interim what?
Um, town manager?
I, I. I can make zero guarantees, I can certainly, I, I fully intend to make calls and see if that, any of the people I'm aware of have any interest.
Okay, thank you.
I want you two to know that I don't disagree with what you're saying about getting the company in here to look for a town manager, okay? I want to get, I want to get all my ducks in a row, I want to get all the questions that I have, that I have wanted to answer to. And I would assume that you and you also, and I know you two have more questions. After we get all those questions, then we can make a decision. But I would really, really appreciate us trying to work together as a team to get through this. You know, I know we can do it. The thing is, if, if we up here bicker back and forth, the audience will want to bicker back and forth with us. We have to lead by example and we need to be able to look at these situations and try to figure out the best outcome and keep everything on a nice even-heel basis and not get everybody all fired up out there because then you've got Team A against Team B, so on and so forth. And we are one team up here. Perfect example of that, Barbara, we've got to, we've got to work together up here.
We had the opportunity to do that, Rob, tonight, by voting to start hiring and bringing in someone. And none of you said no, you, you weren't ready to do that, so.
That's right, I'm not ready. I didn't say I wasn't going to do so. I didn't say I wasn't going to do so.
Well, when are you gonna be ready? When the town manager leaves and our budget and everything to do?
See, this is a perfect example of what I'm talking about.
I'm sorry.
We'll see you for next time.
You know, we just need to stop and punt and figure out what we need to do next and to come up with the answers. That's what we're here for. We are the people that are supposed to be coming up with these answers. Is that not correct, Randy? Is that not correct, sir?
Sir, yes, sir.
Okay. And don't you think it would behoove us if we all tried to get along together and figure out and keep all the animosities down so that the audience doesn't get all fired up and starts screaming and yelling and walking out all mad and everything?
I think my opinion on those matters is irrelevant, but I think the chief spoke to, just the general sentiment is that the need for stability in society.
I didn't hear the last thing he said.
I think the chief spoke to the value of stability in society.
Yes, yes he did. Yes, he did. And I agree with you 100%. So that's what I think that we as a council need to do, okay?
You have your opinion, I have mine.
Well, it's not really an opinion, we're just, we're just, we're just trying to be team players here. Megan, are you willing to?
I'm always willing to be a team player, but that does not mean that I'm trying to agree with you.
I didn't say that.
Like, so, and then.
I did not say that.
Well, then you can only answer so much, Rob, so we're gonna visit it.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and return. I second you, Rob.
I'm gonna hear it.